Good evening and welcome to the December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four city council meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Thank you for joining us tonight. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington is requesting an excused absence. Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here. Councilmember Washington has requested an excused absence. Is there any discussion?
I say we make him Chair of the twenty-third meeting.
There you go. So is there a motion and a second?
Second.
It moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Oh.
Oh, Councilor Christensen?
Could I just get clarification on which motion we're voting on then? Pretty sure this so move would relate to Councilmember Benson's.
We are talking about Councilmember Washington's absence.
Move to use Councilmember Washington.
Got it.
There you go.
Failed for the lack of a second.
Oh, man, that's so.
And he seconded it. Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And Councilmember Washington is excused. Council, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Watten, would you please lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman Washington. Is there? Oh, Watten, sorry, start to do.
Both have W's.
That's right. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And motion passes unanimously and the council agenda is approved. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first is AB twenty-four dash zero nine six Traffic Impact Fee Program. Do we know if anyone has signed up?
I don't believe anyone's signed up.
So we, has no one has signed up in on the sheets. I'm opening the public hearing for the Traffic Impact Fee Program. In this proceeding, the community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal to approve ordinance thirteen oh one, amending the Snoqualmie Municipal Code to add Title twenty dot zero nine Transportation Impact Fees and Associated Rate Study. Only persons appearing in com- in the person will have the opportunity to speak. No one, no online public comments will be accepted during the public hearing, but written comments submitted in person, mail or email could be sent to cityclerk@snokwamewa.gov. And we're accepted till three PM today. So is there anyone in the council chambers who'd like to have public comment regarding the Traffic Impact Fee Program? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. The Traffic Impact Fee Public Hearing is now closed at seven oh four PM. Next item is the second public hearing for AB twenty-four dash zero nine eight Ordinance Adopting the City of Snoqualmie Comprehensive Plan Twenty Forty Four Periodic Update. And no one has signed up to speak to this. But I will open the hearing at this point at seven oh four. And in this proceeding, the community is invited to provide comments regarding the proposal to approve ordinance thirteen oh two adopting the City of Snoqualmie Comprehensive Plan Twenty Forty Four Periodic Update. Only persons appearing in the person will have the opportunity to speak. No one, no online public comments will be accepted during the public hearing. However, written comments submitted in person or email or mail or mail can be sent to cityclerk@snokwamewa.gov. So is there anyone within the city hall that would like to speak to this during the public hearing? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm seeing no one to want to speak to this. So at this point, at seven oh five PM, the public hearing is closed. Our next item is appointments of appointments, reappointments to commissions and advisory committees. To summarize, the purpose of this agenda bill is to confirm the mayor's recommendation to appoint Nick Postglione to the Economic Development Commission, to reappoint Nicole Poss to the Economic Development Commission, reappoint Lori Hay, Richard Anderson, and Kelly Coughlin to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and reappoint Luke Luke Maruziak to the Planning Commission. Council may have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Christensen and second by Councilwoman Cotton. Is there any?
Washington.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously for the appointment and reappointment to the commissions and committees. And I believe we do have several people that have been appointed this evening, so if anyone would like to um, say a few words, that would be fine. And we have Nick Postglione online. Nick, did you want to say a few words? Oh, he does. Okay. Yes. Okay, so Nick? Just hand raising. Okay. Go ahead, Nick.
I'm just here to say thank you. Appreciate it. Looking forward to working with anyone on the committee.
Great. Thank you. We're happy that you're going to join the Economic Development Commission, so thank you. Anyone else? Right. So we're appreciative of each one of these commissioners agreeing to serve for this next year, two thousand and twenty-five. Next item is presentation of the two thousand and twenty-four commission accomplishments. This evening, we will have representatives from four Snoqualmies commissions. Each representative will provide an overview of their commission accomplishments from two thousand and twenty-four. From the Arts Commission, we have staff liaison Nicole Weeby, who will present.
Hi, good evening. So I'm here on behalf of the Arts Commission. They weren't able to be here tonight. So two thousand and twenty-four was a busy year of activation and programming of art in the community. The commission has been moving forward mightily despite some vacancies. They are not, they're not a full commission. Some of their accomplishments are illustrated on the slide. Call for Artists, which is the top slide, the purple, I think that's a chickadee. This past spring, early summer, there was a call for pole banner art and it went out. We received eight artists' submissions. The commission chose the work of local artist Susan Haas. It was four wildlife depictions done in the style of an art known as relief painting. These banners were displayed this past fall and they will become part of the yearly banner pole rotation. Chalk the Block, beloved kids' activity that was present at the Fourth of July Snoqualmie Days Pancake Breakfast and the Block Party. Art Off the Rails Festival, it was the second year, the date changed from September in two thousand and twenty-three to June in two thousand and twenty-four. It's going to be in two thousand and twenty-five in June. It's a partnership or trio between North Bend Arts and Industries Snoqualmie Arts Commission and the Northwest Railway Museum. Based on the vacancies that we have on the Arts Commission, I don't know the level of support that the Snoqualmie Arts Commission is going to be able to give to that event. But they have already selected the date, which will be in June, the the other two partners. The Plain Air Paintout, that's been an annual art program since two thousand and nine. This year's theme was Bridges of Snoqualmie, which was the Meadowbrook and the Snoqualmie Bridge. The winning piece was painted by Cheryl Comstock. She's, I think, I don't know if she's Snoqualmie, but she's a local Valley resident featuring Meadowbrook Bridge. I'm going to have the winning piece always on display in the lobby, so I'm gonna, uh, facilities will be getting that up for me in the next couple of weeks. So the tradition for Plain Air Paintout is that the winning piece is used in the marketing for the next year. So that that painting up there was actually painted in two thousand and twenty-three and it was the winner. So that was the piece that we used in the marketing for this year, and that was Meadowbrook Farm theme. This year, the Arts Commission, led by Commissioner Yeeji Miller and the Snoqualmie Library, they partnered for an art class that sold out within hours of it being posted on the library website. And we're planning more of those in two thousand and twenty-five, trying to focus on the winter and the shoulder season when there's not as much to do with art indoors. So for the last couple of years, you might have noticed Larry the Elk and Elky on Merchant Windows celebrating the Snoqualmie Elk Herd. They're really cute window murals. Sadly, the artist that's been painting those for the last couple of years has moved out of the area, so we'll be looking for a new artist to carry on this pop-up art project. Lastly, the City Hall Lobby Gallery has been reactivated. We've had a couple of different displays in in the lobby this year. Currently, we have Glass Art in the Case. It's a local artist, John, John Izell. I would like to thank the commissioners that we have, Steve Pennington, Yeeji Miller, Donna Kronk, Ashley Hale, and Sarah Ellie for their time and their passions. Thank you.
That is great. Thank you. I know it's a very, it's a busy commission because that also requires the art commissioners to help put on the events too, so they're busy and we appreciate all of their time. Next one?
Fair.
Councilor one?
I I just want to point out Susan Haas and and those banners, it makes me smile every day seeing those, so greatly appreciated.
Excellent. Thank you. Next item is Economic Development Commission. We have Chair Christina Hudson.
I am not Chair Christina Hudson. I know she's in transit. At least that's what she said, but I'm happy to go ahead and speak on these two slides that I helped her assemble together if you'd like.
Councilor Johnson?
We could kick this one back to the end and maybe give them some time.
Yeah, why don't we do that in case she does, is able to make it? Thank you. And then from Parks and Events Commission, we have Chair Emily Anderson.
Hi, good evening. So I'm Emily Anderson. This is Paul Swim. We together make up the totality of the Parks and Events Commission right now. We have had an interesting year. If you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, I can talk a bit about that. Well, actually first, sorry, back up. So the picture there, the image that we chose to include is the Centennial Park All-Inclusive Playground. We're really proud of our role in helping with the design and kind of the step-by-step as it came to be. And it is just an awesome addition to our community for all young kids. It's almost always busy when I go by there. Okay, let's, let's see if I can read that with my glasses on. So as I mentioned, we had an interesting year. We are currently seeking out some more commissioners in order to make quorum and to, thank you so much, be able to kind of move forward in a new route. We were formally redefined and updated our spec goals and functions this year in the summer. We met with the city administrator to review updated priorities and recommendations. We advocated for maintaining local citizens' voices, just having a Parks and Events Commission that's made up by local residents as an important role in the city's parks and events planning. We celebrated the Centennial Park Grand Opening, even in the rain. It was a great event. We were active participants in pretty much each step of the post-plan and we were really grateful to be a part of that. We provided input directly to Kimberly Horn and city staff throughout the process. And then we've also attended all open houses and town hall, town talks, town halls, listened to current, sorry, local citizens and advocated for expansion project process transparency with the YMCA Expansion Project. So really taking a step along the entire process. Our goals for two thousand and twenty-five are to recruit three commissioners. So if you know anyone, shout out, send them our way. Meet quorum every meeting and then continue in a formal and functional advisory capacity to city staff and city council, whatever that may look like. We're just hopeful that we can continue to have a role. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor, do you have any questions? We appreciate your persevering with the Parks and Events Commission because we think it's an important commission and I will encourage my fellow councilmembers. We did go out for requests for applications to the community for Arts Commission and also for Parks and Events Commission and others. But we didn't receive any for either one. So if you know people that might be interested, please encourage them to submit an application. Great. Next one, Planning Commission, is Chair Louizziak? Maruziak available or?
Let's see Chair Maruziak online and I don't see him in person. So I'm happy to speak to the slides that he and I put together on this one as well.
Sounds great.
So the Planning Commission had a number of accomplishments this year with numerous pieces of legislation moving forward and research that supported that legislation, including the Housing Needs Analysis, Housing Action Plan, Middle Housing. The commission also moved through some of its other responsibilities. If you, if you remember, they they have a double hat. They do design review, historic design review, and planning commission. So they did take a look at some of the design reviews that went forward for Buckshot Honey and Gear Automotive. They also approved some important legislation about housing accessory dwelling units. If you recall, that piece of legislation went forward based on a state mandate that allowed for two ADUs per one lot. One of their major accomplishments, of course, is the Comprehensive Plan. They were instrumental with reviewing every single one of the goals and policies associated with all of the elements in the Comprehensive Plan. They even took a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission and processed that as well. The Economic Development Commission did also send them another recommendation outside the economic development element, goals and policies, but also a recommendation that they've been still processing regarding the downtown retail district overlay and mixed dues final plan. In a nutshell, that's, that's their accomplishments for this year. And they've certainly utilized almost every single one of their meetings twice a month for the maximum time from seven to nine and even exceeding after nine PM. So I do appreciate all of their earnestness and hard work and I hope they have the energy to come back and keep going in January.
Thank you. That is a there is a lot of work to have as the Planning Commissioner. We appreciate everything. They're insightful and in-depth research and and, you know, attending and just accomplishing a lot this last year, so.
Lot to be proud of.
Yes. We do have Christina Hudson online now.
Wonderful.
So we're going to talk about Economic Development Commission and Chair Christina Hudson. Christina, are you available to speak to the? Oh, she's on, okay. Speak to the accomplishments?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, well, hello. Apologies for not being there in person, but I'm happy to present to hear you today and I'm glad Emily's there as well. So just a brief overview of our work and as it relates to the mission of the Economic Development Commission. One of the, the one of our points in our mission is to nurture an environment to support and grow local businesses. And one of the ways we did accomplish this was to reach out to our small businesses through small business roundtables. There was outreach made to over sixty-five businesses to inform and invite the small businesses' roundtables. We held three roundtable events at City Hall this year. One of the other accomplishments that the EDC made under this mission statement bullet point was to recommend to the Planning Commission the retail district overlay. Going on to one of the other mission objection, objectives of the Economic Development Commission is to foster the spirit of entrepreneurship and strategic partnerships. And what, some of the ways that we accomplished this task was to look at creative districts and the research that we did with the state of Washington to look at those opportunities and also looking at the Main Street opportunities as well. When we move on to the next point of the Economic Development Commission is supporting a vibrant tourism economy. In talking with our, 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 our small businesses and our local business community, realizing that signage and wayfinding was imperative and looking at improvements there and 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 I believe there's progress being made. There also was a recommendation to look at ways to draw tourists from outside the area and and looking at what other communities have done recently with those giant trolls that are around town and and outreach to Thomas Dambo, the artist, and finding out what it would take to bring something like that to Snoqualmie. All right, are we on the next slide? I can't see. I think, all right, perfect, thank you. So I think one of the key points in economic development is really listening to our business community and not only listening, but knowing, letting them know that we heard them and trying to, trying to develop programs and action items as it relates to that. So one of the most common topics that we heard from our small business community is that there needs to be more foot traffic and customers. This year has been extremely hard for a variety of reasons. The economy's been tough, inflation high, and we just need more customers going through these businesses. Some of the causes that were raised, as you see here, were the minimum wage requirements and inflation. We see that this is an opportunity so that we, to draw more foot traffic, we need to create more tourism and also make sure that we are creating local marketing campaigns and opportunities. Looking, referencing what we had done earlier with the wayfinding signage, make sure that we're increasing the wayfinding in our community as well as increased marketing efforts for tourism and tourism development would be our recommendation. The second, I would say, most talked about issue for our small businesses was workforce and how coming out of the area, this of course relates to affordable housing and the high cost of living. One of the things that the committee is looking into and and staff did a great job of exploring the feasibility of a Snoqualmie business bus. And I think for two thousand and twenty-four, I think that wraps up my presentation. Emily, I don't know if I left anything out, but I'm happy to have you add.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. Council, do you have any question? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that one of the items that wasn't on the Planning Commissioner page was about the retail district overlay. And that's because they are as close to getting there. It has been a tremendous amount of work that they've put into that, trying to make everything work. The community came out very strongly over the last few meetings to engage with the Planning Commission and give excellent feedback, which is just really great to see. So I look forward to seeing what the Planning Commission ends up sending our way, hopefully within the next couple of months.
I think the original idea came out of EDC, Economic Development Commission.
Right.
Because they, they saw a need and and then worked with community developments to come up with an ordinance and changing the land use code. And so, so it's, that was great teamwork between the different commissions. Thank you, Christina, for the, for the presentation and thank you for your volunteering and chairing Economic Development Commission.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilor Watten?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hudson too. And, you know, I think it helps to underscore the importance of our commissions and bringing new ideas forward because otherwise it relies on us and and the staff and having a different set of eyes is incredibly important. I would very curious about the, the idea of this bus to help facilitate local workforce. So thank you so much for bringing that forward as well.
Any other comments? So on behalf of council and myself, we thank all our commissioners for their service and accomplishments and just the great work that you were doing on behalf of this city. So, thank you. Okay, moving on, we have public comment. At this time, we will provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. There will not be an online public comments. Not online public comments, but written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person, mail or email. With that, before we read the overall ground rules, is there anyone within the chambers that would like to speak to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we move on to the consent agenda, which contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. AB twenty-four dash one-two-six Amendment to Landscape Maintenance Agreements for Snoqualmie Parkway and other ROWs, mini parks and facilities. AB twenty-four dash one fifteen Surplus Vehicles and Equipment Replacements for the twenty twenty-five to twenty-six biennium. AB twenty-four dash one-two-eight Ratification of Proclamation of Emergency twenty-four dash three. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman Cotton. Is there any public comment regarding any item that is on the consent agenda? So please raise your hand. Seeing none? Council, do you have any discussion? Okay, moving on to, to vote, all those approve, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And motion passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to ordinances, the first ordinance this evening is AB twenty-four dash zero nine six Transportation Impact Fee Program. This is the second reading of ordinance thirteen oh one. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Move to approve ordinance thirteen oh one Amendment to Snoqualmie Municipal Code to Add Title twenty dot zero nine Transportation Impact Fees and Associated Rate Study. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen. Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so Dr. Tetchy has some additional information to share with the committee. So it's not quite ready for prime time yet, is my understanding. If council likes, I'm sure that she'd be fully capable of explaining some more, but I'll take her at her word for it and move to send it back to committee.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Johnson, second by Mayor Tim Holloway to move AB twenty-four dash zero nine six Transportation Impact Fee Program back to Community Development Committee. Any discussion? Director Artetia, do you have any comments?
I was just going to mention that we have our transportation planner, Chris Brayland, here that has a small presentation. If you are interested, he's willing to provide that presentation to you. It's very brief.
I think, I thought today would be a good evening to have discussion regarding some of our questions and then we can move it back to committee. Further discussion, that Councilor Benson?
If it is a brief presentation, are you guys okay with that and then kicking it back to the committee?
Great. Chris, would you like to come up? Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Let me, it's one slide, as brief as it gets.
Too long.
That's pretty long.
Get zoomed to. Okay, so. There you go. This is in part based on some comments we had last time we were here. We did update the rate study to specifically speak to the Washdot project, the SR two oh two Snoqualmie River Bridge, to clarify in a footnote, and I have more details if you want, if you want details, that this is a Washdot-funded project and the rationale for including it in addition to the fact that the project wouldn't advance without Washdot funding. Just to be, you know, explicitly clear how the impact fees are leveraged in this type of project. And one other note that I just wanted to mention is that in all impact fee programs, it's helpful to recognize that there's a credit system that is embedded in the program such that if any development were to construct parts of any of these projects or fully construct any of these projects, they are due a credit based on the amount of infrastructure that they are building. For example, if someone were to build an intersection improvement or parking improvement that's identified in this project list, their impact fee program or impact fee payment can be offset by their construction of that project. So it's, it's designed such that the mitigation that they might be required to perform under SEPA can be addressed through these. uh can be addressed through these payments. There's not a double dip. Um, and in most cases, the the amount of improvement that they would have to pay to build out of pocket is designed to be the same as this impact fee uh program. And that's something that we've been recently sort of uh looking at a little bit and verifying that's indeed playing out exactly as we would have expected. So um, just wanted to clarify again on this project list, that one large project that had some question about, we wanted to clarify in the rate study. Um, and then just also um make sure that it's understood that there is this credit system that's embedded in all impact fee programs in the state of Washington. That is my presentation, but happy to take any questions that there might be.
Cusser Johnson?
Uh, two things. First, uh, so that's helpful to pull that out and to clarify also that the calculation for the impact fee uh does not include things that are out of the ninety eight million uh that are not anticipated to come from the city. So it does, that calculation doesn't uh include the state funding. Is that correct?
That is correct. So of the ninety eight million, roughly twenty three million dollars are assumed in the impact fee program. And the reason why we show that larger number is to make it very clear to anyone reviewing the program that we are consistent with state law that says that thou shalt not pay all of the cost of the project out of the impact fee program. Uh, it's a transparency metric.
Cusser Johnson?
And then uh the follow up, well, actually sorry, that follow up is a separate thing. Um, so in terms of the credit, uh, let's say that uh there's a development that uh based on the fee schedule, they should pay ten thousand dollars, but they say, you know, out of the goodness of my heart, I feel like constructing the Newton Street connection. Does the uh for four hundred some odd thousand. Um, does uh that credit mean that they just don't have to pay the ten thousand, or do we also credit them back up to the four hundred some odd thousand?
So the credit goes up to their fee amount that they are due. So the city never writes a check back to a developer. Uh, but they can wipe out their entire fee. Uh, so this is realistically only done when the developer can implement the project at the cost identified in the fee schedule or less. If they can mobilize a uh construction uh unit cheaper than the city estimated, which is often the case because they tend to be out there, then they can uh take advantage of that, and it's a win-win for everybody if they can do that for less than the fee program had identified.
But it doesn't go beyond the fee?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
I guess I'm slightly confused, but in the if they were as Newton, no, I'm not sure. If they were to do the project but for to enable their own project, but were able, but weren't able to do it at this cost, at a slightly higher cost, do they not do impact fee forgiveness?
So let's say that, let's pick on the Newton Street example. Let's say that they were needing to implement that connection to make sure that they could get out to the street network and it cost them five hundred thousand dollars. And the fee estimate was four hundred and sixty two thousand dollars for them to pay their impact fee. Then they would not have to pay any impact fee, but if for the purposes of getting access to the roadway network, they needed to implement that street connection, the city does not pay them to implement the street connection. They need to do that just to make their project functional, uh, but they wouldn't have to pay any impact fees because they would have uh uh taken care of that in the uh expenditures to just complete access for their project.
Would they get impact fee credit to the dollar figure of of shown here? Not to the dollar figure of what it may cost them to actually do the project?
That is correct.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
In the list, the project has to be on this list in order to get the credit, right?
It has to be on this list. And there, just to clarify, there are a few what I would term programmatic uh elements, as we talked about last time, that probably the most substantial of which is comprehensive plan intersection traffic mitigation project twelve. There were about seven intersections identified in the uh comprehensive plan that uh were anticipated to have the potential to have uh level of service degradation in the future. Rather than listing all of those out, because depending on where development occurs, we don't know exactly which ones will fall into that camp. Uh, we chose to simplify that. So that's a bit of a catch-all, but you're exactly right, Mayor, that if it's not on that list, they're, A, they don't owe a fee for it, uh, but they also can't gain credit for it. But if they're impacting it and it's not on that list, then SEPA rules apply that they would need to mitigate any impact caused to the rest of the city.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion is to um move it back to to community development, and it'd be like a first meeting in January. And then it could come back to council after that. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And then motion passes, and we will move this back to the community development. Thank you. Next uh ordinance is twenty four dash zero nine eight. Ordinance adopting the city's Snoqualmie comprehensive plan twenty forty four periodic update. This is the second reading of ordinance thirteen oh two. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
I gotta go back up. City Snoqualmie is required to adopt an updated comprehensive plan by December thirty one, twenty twenty four pursuant to RCW chapter thirty six dot seven zero A of the Growth Management Act, which contains the fifteen goals intended to guide the development and contents of comprehensive plans in Washington State. Move to approve uh sec- move to approve, move to adopt the city's Snoqualmie comprehensive plan twenty twenty, twenty forty four periodic update ordinance number one, three, zero, two.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Johnson. Is there any public comment regarding comprehensive plan? Seeing none, and we just had the public hearing as well, and there was no comment at that um as well, but the record shows we have over four hundred public comments regarding the comprehensive plan over the last two years. So there has been public feedback regarding this. Um, is there any discussion? Councilor Johnson?
How many meetings have planning commission, EDC, over committees, et cetera, discussed it a lot?
I don't have that count, but we had fourteen council roundtables. So this was at many numerous commissioner meetings, so. And forty inputs from different organizations, as well as we had, you know, open houses and all types. In fact, they had a, I guess, the public interaction plan that they created, and I think it was very successful with a lot of the input they received. Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, um, because we've had so much robust conversation in the past, it's uh conceivable that we don't have a robust uh conversation tonight. Um, but maybe we will. Uh, but if that is the case, um, something I always am afraid of is that someone's gonna look back and say, oh, that's when they passed that thing that I really don't like. I'm gonna go hear what they had to say about it, and then there's there's crickets. Uh, so I'd encourage members of the public to to go back and listen to some of those meetings. They're riveting.
Say the least.
Any other comments? So I'd like to thank our community development director and community development department, and then economic division, uh, economic development commissioners, planning commissioners, um, council, city attorney, everyone. There was a lot of people that um worked hard on this over the past two years, and I think it was just excellent, exceptionally done well. And I think we have a great product from it. So thank you. Applause.
It's been a um a real pleasure to work on this project and see it across the finish line.
Yes.
Couldn't do, could not have done it with all of, without all of you.
And with that, should we go to vote? All in favor approving the ordinance adopting the city Snoqualmie comprehensive plan twenty forty four periodic, periodic update? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it's unanimous, and the comprehensive plan is approved. Next ordinance is AB twenty four dash one zero seven, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget amendment. This is the second reading of ordinance thirteen hundred. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Move to approve ordinance one, three, zero, zero, amending the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget. May I have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Christensen. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Not seeing any. Um, council, is there any discussion? We do have our budget manager, Jenna Walker. Jenna, do you want to make?
Yes, good evening, council. Uh, we mentioned in FNA that we would likely be bringing forward an amendment to the amendment um due to the proclamation of emergency. So we are proposing a thirteenth amendment within this, and it's an increase of seventy one thousand dollars. Um, the majority of this is within stormwater. It covers things like staff overtime as well as um the immediate repair and cleanup. Um, there are some longer term effects that will be taken care of over the next year or two, things like tree repurchasing, sidewalk repair, et cetera. Um, in terms of revenue, there is a chance, I don't know whether it's a slight chance or a good chance, that this will be declared a greater emergency and that there will be federal funds available um that could potentially cover this, but we are not counting on that at the moment. So this would be um an increase of sixty nine thousand dollars within stormwater and two thousand dollars within parks. And uh as part of this, I'm requesting that we would have a motion to amend what was uh presented in the first, the first reading.
Councilor Johnson?
Move to amend as described.
Second.
So it's been moved by Councilor Johnson and was it Councilor Christensen? The second, the motion providing this additional funding to the budget amendment. Do we have any comments regarding those or discussion?
Do we have a revised um biennial budget ordinance table?
We do. You can see that in attachment one. Um, it's part of the ordinance that has changed, and the only thing in the ordinance that has changed is that biennial budget table. And it results in a an increased appropriation request for twenty twenty four of um well, the total, I should say, appropriation is ninety two million, two hundred and sixty seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars for a biennial total of one hundred and seventy one thou- million, four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy one. And just as a reminder, as part of this, we are requesting that we will decrease some appropriation within the general fund, and to do that, we need a super majority, which is five of you, to approve this ordinance.
Have any other? Cancel future emergencies?
You can try.
Given your comments or questions besides that one?
So moved.
Ready to vote?
I just um
Rep. Tim Holloway?
Just in upcoming FNA, can we uh talk about uh nuances around amending motions, amending agenda bills? Okay. But other than that, that's it. Just want that on the next agenda we have.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, going to a vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So the amendment to the amendment of this seventy one thousand has just passed, and going back to the original motion is to approve the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four biennial budget amendment. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And it passes unanimously. So, thank you. Is there any, okay, public safety, are there, any report for public safety committee?
There is none, Your Honor.
Any report for community development committee?
Uh, no report.
Thank you. Um, Parks and Public Works Committee, the utility rate study presentation and discussion. And our CIP manager, Dylan Gamble, would you please introduce this item?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I, along with uh Sergey, are, and he's already ready on the slideshow, okay. So um, good evening. I am pretty excited about this moment. We've been working our way through the rate stage design, and this is uh getting us much, much closer to what it's gonna take to actually do the update. So what I, what we're going to discuss tonight is essentially a culmination of all the decisions and process and review that the Public Works Committee and this council has had in reviewing the rates for the next six years. And what that essentially has meant is uh, well, we'll go through it in a second, but it's a large variety of different options that the council has in regards to the CIP and to, you know, leveraging with bonds or to um, you know, considerations with rates, and there's a lot to unpack there. And so I just want to say thank you first off for working through this process with us. Um, I know it's extensive and detailed, and a lot of what we're gonna show you tonight is how we're gonna translate the um I guess, I would, I don't wanna say theoretical, it's not theoretical at all, but it's the pieces that make the rate design. So we've been looking at a lot of like bills, what a customer would experience, or what customer class is experienced, and how to balance percentages. And a lot of what we're trying to bring us back around to is the uh code and what the code says on what the costs are per, you know, water line of a certain size or um flows of certain value. So that's really what the, that's how we collect the rates, and so a lot of what we're trying to do is show you exactly how we got there. So I'm gonna turn it over to Sergey, and we'll jump into the presentation and kind of go through that.
Great, and thank you, Dylan, and good evening, council. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me today to continue our discussion regarding the rate study. As Dylan mentioned, our focus primarily will be on rate design, but we do want to catch you up in terms of where we have come from, from the start of the study. So as a quick discussion outline, we're gonna start out with a r- brief background, just a reminder uh all the the previous pieces that we've gone through, all the steps of the rate study. We'll quickly cover the overall process, just to keep reminding ourselves what goes into a study such as this one. And then we'll dive into the rate design itself, talk about what we have reviewed with the committee as well, as well as our recommendations and findings for you, for your consideration. Feel free to ask questions as we go throughout the presentation. So just as a quick refresher on the slide, you'll see quite a few meetings. We have been working with your staff and with the city going back to last November, where we did a quick fiscal health review to see if we do need to make some uh so so to speak, emergency adjustments to the adopted twenty four rates because of the higher than anticipated inflation that we have been experiencing. Since then, we've been working with your staff to perform the full comprehensive study and have been meeting with your either Pub, Parks and Public Works Committee or the full council throughout over approximately nine separate meetings uh in in this process, talking about every single component of the study, introducing preliminary findings, incorporating feedback, and bringing you back updated results. So we are gonna be focusing with that last step of the rate design. Now, just to remind ourselves, a comprehensive study is a three-step process. The three steps have to be performed sequentially. Step number one is referred to as revenue requirement. This is where we look at the big picture from each utility on an independent standalone basis, making sure that each utility can support itself and not just today, but into the future. Step number two breaks those uh revenue requirements down into smaller components and answers the question if cost differences exist to provide service to different types of uh classes. Uh, so if you think of step number one as identifying the size of the pie of expenses that we need to cover, step two looks at the slices of the pie associated with each class of service. Lastly, step number three, today's focus is the rate design, and that's actual development of the fixed and variable charges that each customer will be paying for service for each utility. Now, in terms of revenue requirement, since it has been some time since we've started this component of the analysis, just a quick refresher. When we did look at the revenue requirement, we did see that our rates at current levels are uh are not and will not be able to keep up with obligations. So some kind of an adjustment was necessary. We met with the Parks and Public Works Committee, as well as the full council, over two dedicated meetings to cover this topic. And we talked about alternatives, how do we can resolve our needs. But one of the main drivers of the revenue requirement and the deficiency was associated with a renewal and replacement program of the capital infrastructure that we have in the ground. So the capital was a key driver. Because of that, the scenarios that we brought forth for councils and committees' considerations focused on how we're gonna fund this capital need. Scenario one looked at cash financing everything. Scenario two did the opposite and looked at maximizing debt while still utilizing our existing reserves and ongoing Scenario two did the opposite and looked at maximizing debt while still utilizing our existing reserves and ongoing system investment funding as well as any kind of connection charge revenues, but really primarily relying on debt, which looked at funding approximately fifty-two percent of the capital through new debt issuances over the next six-year horizon. And then lastly, scenario three, try to be kind of a hybrid of the two options coming in somewhere in the middle. Looking at cash financing a little bit more and utilizing debt a little bit less. About twenty-eight percent of the capital was planned to be funded through uh, debt service. Now, when we presented these alternatives to the committee and then the full council, uh, the, the council requested us to go back and prepare one additional scenario to come in somewhere between scenario two and three. So another hybrid sort of scenario which relied a little bit less on debt and a little bit more on cash, but not quite as, as high as scenario three that we developed. And we did bring that one back. Now, since we met uh, in, on November twelfth of this year with the full council, uh, we had discussion with staff and staff indicated that the, the planned uh, FTE additions in twenty twenty-eight were no longer anticipated in this rate study horizon. So we did uh, go back and revise the scenario. And what you'll see here summarized in the two tables down below is the original scenario that we brought back to you on November twelfth and then the modifications. And the only difference you'll see here is that in twenty twenty-seven, we are reducing the total debt issued from about ten point two million to nine point eight million. So reducing the staff positions allowed us to uh, eliminate about four hundred thousand dollars of debt. So now we're relying a little bit less on debt. The overall rate strategy for, for uh, the, all the utilities remain the same. So there's no change in the adjustments. The only change is on how much debt we're issuing. So instead of about thirty-three point eight million, we would be issuing approximately thirty-three point five million or, or so. In addition to the revenue requirement, we performed the cost of service analysis and as we saw in our prior studies, uh, consistent with the phases and strategies we developed during those studies, there are still inter-class cost differences that occur. And typically within the cost of service rate setting world, if our results are coming in plus or minus ten percent or so of the overall target for cost of service, we can consider our classes to be within that range of reasonableness of, of, of meeting our costs. And the reason for that is because you're going to have things that change year to year. Consumption might change by customer or customer class because of weather. Our budgeting might change from customer service to capital, to labor and so on, year to year. And what we want to look at is kind of an average year when we're setting our rates. So that's why there's that range. And what we found, again, consistent with our prior analysis is that the multifamily class of service for the water utility was paying more than their class of service and the retail irrigation class of service was paying less. And you can see this visually in the bottom left chart. You'll see there are dash lines. If the bars are within those two dash lines, it indicates that our classes are pretty much within that ten to, ten percent plus or minus range of reasonableness. If they're outside of that range, this is indicating they're not quite uh, paying their share or paying too much. So if the bar is higher than the lines, it indicates that they're paying too much. If the bar is lower than the lines, it's indicating that the class is not quite paying their share. And again, these findings were consistent with the prior study when we developed the phase in, in the, the twenty twenty update. For the sewer utility, we did see that the residential and multifamily classes, again, were paying more than their allocated share cost. Residential was fairly close and then commercial high was paying less than their cost of service. Based on these fun, uh, findings, we did meet with a committee as well, uh, over two, two dedicated meetings and incorporated their feedback as well as the full council uh, uh, over another meeting to review these findings and talk about what can we do in order to resolve these uh, differences in cost recovery mechanisms for cost of service. Some of the options that we discussed during those meetings included postponing any, making any changes, you know, keeping the differentials as is, applying the increases across the board or proportionally to every class of service within each utility. Making the cost of service adjustments all at once would be, which would be pretty substantial increases to some classes, but also a decrease to others, as well as a phase-in approach, which would gradually move our classes towards cost of service over time. Now, based on our discussions over these three meetings, the committee as well as the council uh, preferred the gradual phase-in approach, which is again, consistent with prior councils directions in the, in the previous studies. But uh, during some of the committee meetings, the, the committee wanted us to come back with a modified phase-in and lo, and requested two additional scenarios, which basically focused on reducing the, the pressure on the multifamily class. So we came back with a modified approach, which looked at uh, focusing on reducing the pressure on the multifamily class a little bit sooner. So on this slide, you'll see is a summary of the full cost of service uh, i- in the far left column for both of the tables, as well as the six-year phase-in strategy that moved our classes towards cost recovery. And as a quick refresher, what we're looking at here is utility-specific average increases in the system total row for each table. This shows the system average or revenue requirement by year that needs to be recovered. And then the class-specific increases indicate what the phase-in strategy would be. And the logic that we utilized here is that if a class was paying too much, as an example, multifamily on the water table, we froze them in place and that, that way that they received a relative decrease over time. So as the rate increased five point seven five percent, they stayed constant, therefore they received a five point seven five decrease. And that gradually moved them towards cost of service. On the flip side, if a class indicated that they needed to go up, instead of getting them all the way to cost of service in one year because it would have been a pretty substantial impact to that class, we gradually moved them above the average increase to make that progress towards cost of service. And again, similar logic was taken for the sewer utility. The slides here are consistent to the presentation I believe we had on November uh, twelfth. So that's, that, that's kind of the summary for the first two steps that we've gone over in quite a few meetings and details and incorporated your feedback. The last step, the rate design uh, discussion i- is going to start here. And really the focus and the primary goal of rate design is to develop the fixed and variable charges that collect the dollars identified in the first two steps. Once we uh, make that uh, goal or accomplish that goal, this is where we get to incorporate the goals and objectives of the utility. Uh, those goals can include cost recovery, aligning uh, rates to how we are occurring costs from a fixed and variable perspective, but also incorporating any kind of policies and objectives of the utility, conservation, affordability and so on can be included. And what's important to remember is that there's not a one-size-fits-all solution, not a perfect rate structure that will accomplish every single goal. If we're uh, trying to recover, trying to make sure our rates are self-suffi- uh, are sufficient, uh, we would focus on fixed charges. If we're trying to incentivize conservation, we would focus on volume charges. Uh, again, these are counter type of policies. So the really objective of this step and, and the process is to identify the goal we're trying to accomplish and then utilize the rate structures to accomplish that goal. Now, in terms of the, this step of the analysis, we did meet with the Parks and Public Works Committee over two dedicated meetings to go over rate design. During the first meeting, we introduced potential modifications or considerations for the committee uh, for the rate design. We presented options including no, no changes whatsoever, predominantly focusing on the across-the-board adjustments tying to the cost of service, class-specific increases. We talked about weighing the increases a little bit more or less to the fixed and variable charges. We looked at increasing conservation messaging through either modifying the tiered rates or block rates for residential customers or looking at seasonal rates for non-residential customers, as well as introducing a volume-based sewer rate for single-family residential customers, which are currently a hundred percent fixed on the sewer utility side. Now, based on our discussion with the committee, the preference was to keep the current structures as is and apply the increases on an across-the-board basis tying to the cost of service phase-in utility-specific, class-specific increases. Because of the level of the adjustments that we needed to make and the progress we need to make on the cost of service, the focus really was on revenue recovery and phase-in of the cost of service. Uh, when the, whenever we do any kind of structural changes to our rates, it introduces more volatility and variability in terms of the impacts that you're going to see. So within the residential class, if we change the structure in any way, while we'll still collect the appropriate dollar amounts as a class, within that class, some customers might actually go down, some of those customers might actually go up way more than the average increase of the average for the class will be based on the target. So introducing this additional step of structural changes would create uh, more uh, impacts within the class themselves. So the committee felt uh, that the preferred alternative would, would be to keep uh, consistent with prior council's direction and really focus on overall revenue collection, recovery and cost of service adjustments. So with that, just wanted to give you a quick refresher in terms of what the actual rates look like. So on this slide, you'll see the summary of the water uh, utility rates under current levels. This is the twenty twenty-four rate table. And you can see that the table is broken down into halves. The upper portion summarizes the monthly fixed charges, which are different by class of service and do scale with meter size. You'll see that there's also a per-unit rate for the multifamily class, as well as volume rates, which are represented on the bottom portion of the chart. Here you can see there's a conservation block rate for the residential class with cost per hundred cubic feet increasing once you exceed a certain threshold and there are three separate blocks. While the multifamily, commercial and irrigation rates are all the same per unit of water, per hundred cubic feet, no matter the level of consumption. Now, again, as we talked through with the committee, we will be applying the increases on an across-the-board basis. No structural changes are made and we're simply are tying our adjustments to the cost of service phase-in levels. So what does that actually mean? So taking the residential and multifamily rates first, just to keep it all proportionate on one slide, you can see that the residential per meter rate, as well as the multifamily per unit rate is summarized on the upper portion. You'll see that the residential existing rates are scaling with approximately five and three-quarter percent per year, going up from thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents for the most common meter size or a three-quarter inch uh, meter size up to about fifty-four dollars, assuming the rate strategy holds over a six, a six-year horizon. You'll see that the multifamily class stays the same on a per-unit basis over that time period. Similarly, the volume rates are scaling with that same percentage for residential and staying constant for multifamily. Moving on to the commercial rates, here you can see they scale with meter size. They're starting at forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents and gradually increase to approximately sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents for the three-quarter inch meter. Similarly, the volume rate goes from four dollars and eight cents to about five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Lastly, we have our retail irrigation, which is about fifty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. This would uh, go up to about eighty-seven, thirty-eight and the volume rate will go from four dollars and thirty-three cents to seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Moving on to the sewer utility, here you can see a similar summary. Majority of our rates for this utility are fixed in nature. So the residential, multifamily, commercial classes are uh, have a fixed component, but the residential and multifamily are only assessed a fixed rate. The volume rates are applicable to, only to the commercial classes of service and only apply once the allowance of six, six hundred cubic feet or sixty C F has been exceeded. So for any usage above that level, there, there is a volume rate per hundred cubic feet. Similar strategy was developed where the class-specific adjustments were applied to the current rates. No structural changes were made. So on this slide, you'll see the summary of each individual class uh, as well, the fixed and the, and the variable components of the rates. Lastly, we have the stormwater utility. Here, the rates are applied on an equivalent residential unit or equivalent service unit basis, which is approximately twenty-six hundred uh, square feet of impervious surface area. Each home i- is one equivalent service unit and then non-residential properties uh, will be a multiple of these units based on their actual impervious surface area for each uh, non-residential uh, uh, business or uh, account. Here, you can see that the adjustments are applied equally. All classes will be paid the same proportional uh, increase, going from about twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents to approximately forty-four dollars and nine cents. And lastly, we wanted to bring back the impacts that you have seen before. This is exactly the same impacts table that you have been seeing over the last presentation or so, because we're not making any structural changes and simply applying the increases proportionally based on cost of service on an across-the-board basis. There are no changes to these impacts. Just a quick reminder, the average bill does include all three utilities for each class of service. There's water sewer and stormwater. The average also represents uh, a, a certain number of units and consumption. You'll see a little note at the bottom of the slide showing you what we assumed for each class of service. And just a little bit of a caution to take here, because the bigger the class in terms of the user size, the commercial class as an example, you're going to have a little bit more variability than you will with a smaller user like a residential home. So there could be a, a wide spectrum of impacts, but we wanted to keep the impacts condensed and focused on an average type user. Here you'll see that the typical residential home is currently paying about a hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-six cents for average uh, level of consumption, which includes seven hundred cubic feet of water average per year. That would increase about twelve point uh, one percent in year one, in twenty twenty-five, about six percent in year two, and then around four and a half to four and a quarter percent thereafter. Multifamily will be about four and a half percent because of the sewer level of increase. In the year one, about two percent in year two, and then about one percent thereafter due to storm, because we are keeping the sewer, water and sewer uh, as flat as possible. The commercial low would see about a twelve point six seven percent adjustment, followed by six point nine, as well as five percent plus or minus thereafter. And then lastly, commercial high will see a close to a nineteen percent adjustment, nine and a quarter or so in, in the second year, followed by six and three-quarters to six percent adjustments per year. Again, these are consistent to the numbers that we've shown in prior meetings. And the last slide, uh, just bringing back the, the comparison of a typical residential bill uh, within the city uh, today, as well as the proposed rate and the, your neighboring utilities. Just a caution, as I always do, these are a little bit of apples and oranges uh, comparisons. There's a lot of differences here in terms of we're comparing rates today as well as proposed twenty-five. We know a lot of these utilities are going through the same type of studies. We just don't know their uh, uh, the final adopted rates and what they are, except what was listed on the city of North Bend and Salton's websites. Uh, everybody else is in twenty-four. In addition, there's other differences that utilities have, such as a provider for treatment. Some have their own treatment plans like the city, others don't. So there's just a caution to take when you're performing a side-by-side comparison such as this one. In any case, uh, this question does get asked and right now you're somewhere in the middle. Assuming nobody else changes, which we know is not going to be true, you're going to jump up a couple of spots for the combined bill. And that brings us our discussion to the end. Really, we are looking for feedback from the, the council regarding the rate design step, that last step of the overall rate study process. Uh, the, the goal is to get these rates in place as soon, as early as, as February. I think just uh, working backwards and timing and the requirements for noticing, that is probably the earliest date that we'll, we'll be able to uh, get the rates into effect. And the next step would be to finalize the, the rate study, the monthly portion of the fee uh, of the rate study and then focus on the, the one-time fees, the general facility charges, bring that piece to the end, which we're pretty close to as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Sergey. Uh, let's see. So let's start with the Chair, Public, Public Works, be Counsel Benson and then Counsel Watten.
Uh, yeah, uh, just a note on the meetings that we've had in committee. Um, Mr. Tarasov, could you go back to the uh, rate design impact slide, uh, just a couple of slides ago? That's the one. Um, this is, at least from my perspective, this is where we uh, put most of our attention. There was the opportunity to get very granular in the way people were charged for water um, and I be really surgical about the way that was done. And I, rather than spend our time doing that, what we were trying to do was make the numbers here, numbers that could be swallowed. Um, and I, you know, one of our big uh, goals was to right-size multifamily bills uh, and um, and also not overly uh, burden other classes. For example, at one point, uh, multifamily was a little bit lower than this, but commercial was into the twenties. And um, and I, so we, we didn't want to overburden that class while we were trying to get multifamily to the right size. Uh, so this is the, at least from my perspective and my fellow committee members can um, agree or disagree. This is where I feel like we spent most of our energy trying to get this slide to, to where we, we felt we could, it was as palatable as possible.
Counsel Watten?
Yeah, thank you. And Sergey, would you yield to a series of questions? I'd like to start off with uh, slide nine. Um, we can go back to that. And it's just for my edification, I'm sure for many others, it's um, understanding the numbers, because really this is kind of the root driver of. understanding the numbers, because really this is kind of the root driver of the costs and where you end up at. Help me understand the sewer, the increase in the sewer, because it seems like that is significant compared to the water. And I appreciate the fact that when I flush the toilet, it works. But I don't, I want it to be free. So could you help us, help me understand, and maybe some others, you know, why the increase is significant, more significant or more weighted on the sewer portion?
So the sewer utility, and this question goes back to that first step of the overall rate study, the revenue requirement, where we focus first on the total number before we break it down. The biggest driver for the sewer utility is the capital investment, which is associated with the treatment plant project. So we have quite a few reclaimed and treatment plant projects that we have to, we already started, and we have to finish, and we have a deadline that we have to complete. So we don't have a lot of ability to move or postpone those capital-related costs. So we have a pretty significant need in a very short amount of time. Because we are using finance, debt financing, again, there's no time to generate enough money from a cash perspective, the increase would have to been over a hundred, close to a hundred percent, I believe, going by memory, to generate the needed funds to pay for this project out of hand. We also have to comply with coverage requirements, which for the city is a target of one and a half for total debt. So this is a combination of having a need of capital that is coming, that is already underway and needs to be built, and the need to be able to comply with all the associated financial reserves and policy requirements, including meeting coverage obligations. Does that help?
That, that does. Can you remind me how much are we investing in the sewer upgrade?
Sergey, I could jump in here.
Yeah.
It's more than just the sewer upgrade. I think a couple of the examples are waste treatment facility three, the finishing up of that. Another big one is the Class A water reservoir. That's part of the sewer. And it is, as I know, council has reviewed this project several times now. It's pretty expensive. There's also consideration for the Department of Ecology loan. And if you were to consider that loan kind of an equivalent of bonding in the way we've reviewed it versus rates. So that's, those two big projects are happening in two thousand and twenty-five and are, represent a pretty sizable percentage increase.
And to that point is, what is our capital investment in these upgrades total aggregate?
Dollar numbers? Let me see if I can quickly find it.
Somewhere between twenty million and twenty billion, I'm sure.
I believe Class A water is like nine, nine million, and then the remainder of waste treatment facility three is like three to, yeah, three to five, I think, so it's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you're to, we used to have these bar graphs, and I wish I could come grab you one. But, yeah, the capital for sewer next year is big, and then it comes back down. It's kind of.
With inflation, we have included about eleven million, not including twenty-four. With twenty-four, we're in the twenty-three million dollar range, twenty-four through twenty-seven. So a very sizable amount of projects.
And one other question, and that's the number of commercial low monthly users versus high monthly users. Do you have a number of how many connections on each of those? Just so that we have a little bit of an understanding, or am I getting too deep in the weeds? I just want to know how many people are going to be angry at me.
I think for businesses, for the commercial high, I believe there's forty-four.
On the high?
On the high, and then I'm not sure on commercial.
About one hundred and eighty-five or so on the commercial low.
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew the easier one to remember.
Okay, thank you very much on that. And the last one, this goes back to the committee in slide twenty. And then is, you know, this is, I get my water bill, and it's like, oh my gosh. So just, you know, as a residential part, I'm a little bit sensitive with. This is a big jump the first year, but you've gone through different scenarios where this is a modified increase, right?
Oh, distinctly, yeah, there is a lot of ways to phase in the costs, so to speak, whether it's distributing across variable costs versus fixed costs, or whether it's different classes, how quickly we make the classes pay for the corrections to the imbalance. There's, there's been lots of conversations on those things. But if you want me to get into one of them in particular, I'm happy to.
Well, I like the number five, but it's not even close to twelve, so.
Gotcha. This is an example representative with all the assumptions around the bottom, so.
Got it, okay.
Wouldn't necessarily say it perfectly fits your circumstance from your bill, right? But this might be representative of a good portion of that kind of average.
I use a little more water than the average, but just closure. Okay, I'm done. Thank you very much for participating.
There was, there was the.
Councilor Benson?
There was the option of borrowing more money, right? But that has obviously its own effects. But, yeah, the percentages could have been driven down a little bit further if we borrowed more money. We were looking for, we were looking for the happy medium, the unhappy medium that we could, that we could swallow.
Councilor Johnson?
Does this bring the multifamily and the retail irrigation into that equitable zone of the plus or minus ten percent band by two thousand and thirty, or is the goal to just get it closer?
It does, actually, Sergey, there's a slide that almost shows that crossover point. Are you for water, by the way, or do you?
I guess for either one, I was specifically looking at water, but that, I think, had the greatest imbalance, but yeah.
Yeah, multifamily gets pretty close. They get within one-twenty percent, up from one-sixty. So they make about almost eighty percent progress. Retail irrigation makes a little bit less progress, about thirty percent. But again, it's a company, you would have to increase even more to make that progress faster. So both classes make progress on the water side. Multifamily makes the most, almost eighty percent there. Sewer, we are there. So for sewer utility, which is a big portion of the bill, we make, we get within or almost right on cost projections. Again, we'll see what the next update would be, but right now we're projecting to be right on cost of service over that six-year horizon. The commercial high class, again, will not, will not be quite there. They're currently at sixty percent, they would get up to about seventy percent. But again, because of the size of the increase upfront, we just wanted to moderate the increases. So there is progress, about thirty-four percent progress, but not as significant as the class.
Sergey, can you go to slide nine? I think that is probably easier to read.
Yeah, so here you don't quite see the percentage change within each class, but the multifamily class again gets for the water within ten percent. So quite a bit of progress made, about almost eighty percent progress. And retail irrigation, thirty-five percent progress. Sewer, multifamily is right on after six years. The commercial high would make about thirty-four, thirty-four, thirty-five percent progress.
Can I add something to Sergey's comment, which is pretty much exactly what I'd say? With the additional note, which is that these are targets. And so there is a bit of like, we're looking at the future and trying to dial something in six years into the future without knowing exactly size and scale of these customer classes, or whether there's drought impacts that affect volumetric data that we've kind of assumed. So there's some things going on here that make it not a perfect, that's why the plus or minus ten, the five percent, plus or minus five, so ten percent swing. We're targeting that, we're going for zero, trying to get there as quickly as possible. But if we were to go there immediately and charge the bills correctively, right? Eighty-five percent increases or down thirty-six percent increases, we might be off target, especially if we do it in one year. And there's other consequences of trying to correct for everything in one year, too, that are actually.
Yeah, another benefit is to allow customers to adjust. A good example, I think, was there's a big, since the last study, there was a fairly large apartment complex, multifamily complex that went in, and the usage as a system overall changed per unit slightly than before. So you're going to have those changes year to year. And if we'd made one change all at once, the next time we do it, we might have to retroactively go back and reverse the change in some way or fashion. So doing a gradual phase in allows us to observe how customers change their behavior based on this price signaling, and then make gradual adjustments instead of all at once, and then reversing them the next time.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so then a follow-up on that. So the gap, first of all, it's plus or minus five percent for a ten percent total gap, not plus or minus ten percent for twenty percent gap. That was a previous slide of those, kind of like those two bands.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, I completely understand the intent there. And this is already a very aggressive schedule as it is to try to tackle that imbalance. And, yeah, I am thrilled to see that we're going to make so much progress. But I could definitely understand that trying to go all the way could make things even steeper, and then things start to become difficult to swallow, so. Thank you.
Council, do you have any other questions, comments? Councilor Watten?
I'm having a hard time trying to grasp slide twenty. If we can go back there. I kind of take the IKEA approach of how much can you pack into a box and make it work? And, and make it right size. I'm, I'm having a lot of consternation over a twelve percent out-of-the-shoot increase. I'd really like to see that at nine percent, and what we can do to make that happen, kind of reverse engineer. That is a steep increase. And I just, I just can't bite off on it. I understand that there's, you know, fixed costs, and there's, there's being, you know, a matter of, of being fiscally responsible and all, but the majority is of people where it's hitting the most are residential. Businesses, on the other hand, just being a, putting on my banker hat, it's part of cost of doing business. You kind of write it off. As a homeowner, you don't get the chance to write it off. This system, we can, we need to, to me, we need to right-size this. We're getting closer, but I think there's a little more work that we need to do on this to have me comfortable with it. It's not that I'm against sewer, water and clean water and all that, but I, I think that just from the sensitivity of everything going up on consumers, that's where I'd like to have us see what we can do to, to make those numbers closer to what I have in my head.
Finance Director?
Well, I was just going to share that we have been sensitive over the past four or five years at this point. So indeed, back in twenty-one, the council approved a zero percent increase in our water, sewer, stormwater rates, and then really three percent increases over that time period as well throughout the pandemic in which we have experienced this as a city. You know, nine percent inflationary rates. So the city was very cautious back then to make sure that we kept those rates relatively low because the residents were experiencing the pandemic. Unfortunately, some of this as well is to play catch-up with where our expenses are overall. The economy is a bit different from where it was back then, and I think we have maybe more certainty moving forward. But certainly back then, we were sensitive to that conversation, and potentially we could be here as well.
Thank you. Mayor President Holloway?
And the other consideration, this is a balloon, and the volume of the balloon isn't going to change. If you push it down in one area, it's going to pop up in another. And in these ca, in this chart, I believe the two areas out of sync are residential and multifamily. And you'll, you'll drive some increase in the multifamily if you take it out of residential. The thought was, and we didn't want to do that all at once, was to ease into it, but even easing into it, you get that twelve percent. And it's not commercial versus residential in that case.
Councilor Benson?
It's combined, too.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, and if we, if we were to take on more debt in order, kind of, what we're dealing with is a completely understandable approach to kicking the can down the road. We are down the road, and, and I think at this point we have to decide, do we just keep kicking the can, or do we start to? Start picking up cans, man? We got to start picking up cans.
Just everywhere.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, and I think there is a rather expensive project that that I don't think that many of us are very excited about doing, but has to be done. That's just the way it is.
Any other, Councilor Cotton?
I think, you know, especially at the Parks and Public Works Committee, we really tried to look at as many angles and, and, you know, make it, as we've said, compromise on some points and, but make it as palatable. And, you know, like, we are playing, we are playing catch-up. We've, you know, got to, you know, gradually ease into this, and that's, that was our goal, and not, you know, go overboard on, on taking on additional debt for the city. So this is something that we looked at so many different scenarios trying to, to get this through. So we were hoping that this was the best for all parties involved. So it's not ideal, but it's, it's definitely something we worked hard on.
Yeah, told us this was the best one, so.
Councilor Christensen?
Just going to say that I don't think anybody has any particular joy in doing this, but it is necessary, and I appreciate the balance it's been struck, that our residents understand the necessity in going forward with it.
Any other comments? Sethi? Dylan?
I was just going to say what my next steps were, so I feel like you might be on the same place. Yeah, so what the plan is now, assuming that we didn't have any changes here, was to bring more or less what you saw in the rate design slides, which is, you know, three-quarter meter costs this much in this year, this year, this year. That's how our rates look on our, on our city code. And so what we're going to do is prepare an ordinance that looks, that recs for this. Right now it has two thousand and twenty numbers through two thousand and twenty-six. Now we're going to have two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and thirty. And so that's what the format you'll see next. We will go to Parks Public Works Committee first, and then it'll be the first ordinance and a public hearing at the next council meeting. It has two hearings, so it will then come back to the secondary January Public Works Committee meeting, I suppose, and then, or maybe not then, but definitely that second council meeting for the final ordinance hearing. And then we will implement the rates as quickly as we can, once they're adopted and approved.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Sergey.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tarasov.
Good evening.
You too. Okay, next item under. First of all, there were thingals for Parks and Public Works Committee.
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay. Next item, Finance Administration Committee. We have AB two-four dash one fourteen, purchase of vehicles and equipment replacements for the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six biennium. Mayor President Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Purpose of this agenda bill is to obtain authorization to purchase replacement vehicles and equipment for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six biennium. Due to manufacturer lead times, new order delivery delays, manufacturer model year retooling and rebidding, early authorization is requested to utilize the full twenty-four month timeframe to complete orders. Council authorization is required as the purchase of the individual each listed asset exceeds the fifty thousand dollar spending limit. All right, move to approve the purchase of twenty-three vehicles and equipment replacements for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six biennium. May I have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mayor President Holloway, and second by Councilor Watten, to approve the purchase of vehicles and equipment replacements for the next biennium. Is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Seeing none? Tonight we have our Fleet and Facilities Superintendent Don Harris here to speak to this item.
Good evening. Council Mayor, City Staff. Here to speak and to answer questions they have on this agenda. I also want to mention that this is the twenty-year anniversary of the ERNR Fund. It was established in two thousand and five, so in twenty-five it will be its twenty-year, so.
Nice.
Any questions?
Bring balloons. Brian, you were here, you remember when that was. Brian, you were here, you remember when that was?
Um, council, do we have any questions for Mr. Harris regarding the purchase? This was all included in our biennial budget that we had approved earlier in October, so. Council Johnson?
It's all replacement, right?
Are these all replacement?
Yes, these are all replacements, um, for existing assets. Uh, we'll bring forward all-new added programs and, uh, anything attached to contracts such as the North Bend Police. Uh, we removed it from this agenda and we'll bring it back when we decide, um, when we move forward on that. It's what, what we decide on it. So it'll be future.
Any questions? They, they did review this at Parks Public Works as well. Okay, going to vote, all in favor, see eye?
Aye.
Impose nay, and it is unanimous, and AB twenty-four dash one fourteen purchase of vehicles and equipment replacements for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six biennium is approved. Thank you, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mayor's Report, my report is rather short tonight. Um, I would like to thank our Parks and Public Works and our community liaison Nicole Weeby for this fantastic Winter Lights Festival that we just had this past weekend. There's a lot of organization over the past several months that went into that, and many days of putting up lights in historic downtown, then also up on Snoqualmie Ridge, and it was just a beautiful evening. Um, Santa and I rode in on the train and we arrived, there's actually snow blowing. It was pretty cool, and then just, I think, you know, they added loudspeakers, so now you can hear you know, you can hear the people up on the stage, so everyone can hear, there's five different groups up there that were, that, um, provided music. So it was just a wonderful evening, so thank you to, again, our community liaison and to the Parks Group, so nice job. With that, this is our last council meeting of the year, twenty-twenty-four, so thank you, Council, for all of your hard work this past year. Had lots of council meetings and many roundtables too, so we've covered a lot of ground, so thank you. And I just say happy holidays. So, that's Mayor's Report. Moving on, do we have any community liaison or reports? Council Cotton?
Uh, just a update from the, uh, SCA's, uh, Public Health um, meeting this month, uh, Dr. Khan, um, brought us up to date, um, some things that are emerging. Uh, one is we do have avian flu in Washington State. Um, they just, uh, uh, had it in the wild geese and fowl, um, population in Woodland Park Zoo, and seven of the caretakers, uh, were exposed and one human did come down with symptoms, uh, but did test negative, uh, and all are out of the incubation period now, so that's the, the good news there. The problem that they're having, um, the avian flu has been, um, showing up um, in raw milk, so for people that are consuming that, um, these, so especially, there's a big deal in California, they've suspended sales, and, um, so of course, the advice is um, for your milk consumption, drink pasteurized milk, um, and it also protects you from intestinal tuberculosis, so. Um, so, um, whooping cough on the rise, um, with COVID, it interrupted the vaccine series for kids, especially because there's a, quite a series of like four to five uh, doses for the kids, so, um, everybody needs to get back on track and, uh, we're seeing the whooping cough, not just in children, but in adults as well, so, uh, it's, it's been, become quite a, a big deal. Um, and also, the last thing was, uh, the uh, gun violence, um, uh, federal funding that was being provided by the Biden administration, um, for the regional authorities has been uh, suspended, uh, as we can imagine with, uh, the loss of funding. Uh, as the new administration moves forward, we'll, we'll see what's going to be happening with that, but there's a spending freeze to all, uh, new programs and initiatives, um, by Governor Inslee right now, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other updates? Council Wynton?
Yeah, thank you. On December fourth, I held the last installment of the Housing Chat. Uh, Council Member Christensen was in attendance, as well as Director Arteche. Mayor, I can't remember. Okay, so anyway, um, guest speaker was Eric Bleagan. He is the Executive Director of the Mustard Seed Project in Key Peninsula. And he shared about their newly opened facility that has forty units of portable housing for seniors in graduated care, um, and, uh, follow-up to that is, we are going to take a road trip down in January, along with Susan Kingsbury Como, who operates the sixty-eight units that we have here of senior housing and all of the senior housing of Snoqualmie, the Upper Snoqualmie Valley, um, and it's kind of unique because it, it utilizes USDA rural development dollars, which allows, um, uh, organization, uh, nonprofit to develop um, units, and rather than being the traditional twenty-year amortization, it extends it out to forty years, and I believe that it's at one percent. So it makes it much more attainable. As we grapple with this thirty percent AMI, this is an opportunity for us to address a, an important segment, and that's holding our seniors here in the valley, um, with some other options. And they have expanded services, so anyway, um, we will continue to pursue on affordable housing, and the other uh, piece of information too is, through the task force, we've talked about, uh, doing city-owned property and then um, putting out RFP, RFQ, which we are in the process of doing. Um, City of North Bend is first out of the gate in their RFP, um, but when the, the city was looking at the, the lot that's at two-thirty Main Street, uh, they were thinking it'd be about fourteen units of housing. The reality is that because they had outside influence, people that do this all the time, uh, it could be thirty or more units of affordable housing on that same piece of property, and comes back to this whole notion that if we let, um, nonprofit groups and and for-profit groups come in with their ideas, sometimes it works out better for all of us, and and i- it seems like, uh, that is certainly the case in this, and we're looking forward to, uh, the submissions that are coming through the RFQ, we just released on ninety thirty-three on the Parkway. Uh, I was talking with one of the executive directors tonight in downtown Bellevue, and he was excited, uh, they've seen it, and, uh, they're going to take a look to see, uh, of making a run at it, so anyway. Good work, and it's coming out on the, uh, Seattle Journal of Commerce as well, so we should see some more, um, action and interest in there, so thank you.
Excellent. Any other, any other input, reports? Council Johnson?
Uh, one more thing from, uh, the Planning Commission that I got to mention earlier, uh, that I don't think was on the list, maybe it was, but I'll mention anyway. Uh, was, uh, that, um, they are forwarding to the council a recommendation for a critical areas uh, buffer zone update, uh, that's required by the state, uh, they gotta update those every once in a while to the best available science, and, uh, there are some, scroll down, uh, some changes. I have no idea what a type N buffer is or a type F buffer, but those are both increasing from uh, fifty feet to a hundred feet, uh, and seventy-five feet to two hundred feet respectively, um, and, uh, yeah, that will come to us soon.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, thank you. Um, department reports, City Administrator Champless, do you want to give us a summary of the reports?
Yes, uh, really refer, um, uh, the council and the public to these reports, they do a good job of of highlighting the interdepartmental work that went on during the windstorm, how communications was mess, doing the messaging. Parks and Public Works response, fire response, um, so it's a good overview of kind of how the whole system works and works well. Um, I can take zero credit for it because I was out when that went down. I, all the credit belongs to the folks in the back of the room, they did a heck of a job. Um, I'm very proud of each of them for their response to that. Um, and then, uh, it looks like our building permits are going to wrap up at about four hundred for the year. Uh, issued, uh, that's a little prediction, right now they're at three eighty-four, we got one more month to go. Um, fire calls were at a hundred fifty-nine incidents in November, uh, fifty-five percent were EMS. And then, um, it appears by the police numbers at the end of the report, that crime is continuing to decline in most categories. So, good work, Police Department.
Thank you. Any questions for our City Administrator? Right. So tonight, we have an executive session, there's actually two pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero one one zero one I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing agency litigation or potential litigation. Um, so with that, those attending would be interim City Attorney David Lenahan, City Attorney Dean Berg, City Administrator Mike Champless, Chief Lynch, Finance Director Drew Bute, and Captain Gary Horacey. Is there anyone else that I've left out? Yep, and counsel. And no action is anticipated following the executive session, and the recording of the meeting will cease right before we go into executive session. And then we will notify our city clerk afterwards of the date that we time that we came out of our executive session and adjourned.
All this is gonna take.
So we are thinking, I mean, forty-five minutes, and so we hope to re, to come back out of executive session and adjourn at nine thirty PM. So again, our video and audio will cease, and we will adjourn out of executive session for the evening. With that, thank you, everyone, and happy holidays.